Tammy Slanker here. Jerry Bradley here. Jason Stewart.
Here.
Here.
Linda Smith. Hazel Riley. Donnie Ewan.
Here.
Sidney Wood.
Here.
We have a formal. You have a copy of minutes in your, from your main meeting in the packet. I'll give you a minute to look over those. And I will present a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll make the payment, Slanker, to approve the petition.
Second.
Second by Jerry Bradley. All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed with no. The next thing is five to four. It's also in your packet. And I'll give you a minute to look over it as well, and then I'll present a motion to approve. Motion to approve. Motion made by Jason Stewart to approve.
I second.
Second by Tammy Slanker. Any discussion? All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed with no. And approved. Five to four, Steve Redman.
I don't know.
Chief Kepper.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Page.
Oh, I have anything. I was very busy. Cutting streets and fixing streets and doing what we can do. Taking up trash. I'd ask, answer any questions if you might just get the same thing for me.
Or try it then.
Okay.
David, committee reports.
I think our barbecue that's coming up on June twenty-ninth at the old community fair in Kansas two. We still have tickets for sale if anybody wants to find a ticket. Um, and it's tomorrow. Hopefully it won't be as hot as it was last time.
Making nine. Move up a little bit. Any war reports? And we're going to be unfinished business, and so we'll go with new business. Uh, first on his end is, uh, Jason Hogan. He resigned from, uh, planting and zoning in committee. Uh, we want to thank Jason for his service, uh, to the commission and to the city during his time on the commission. And that now to bring a recommendation to replace Jason on the commission. And I'm recommending Brent Copeland to replace Jason. Brent married Carol Smallwood Copeland. He's an eight-year resident of the community of Premon. Brent Carroll had five grown children. He works as a project engineer, uh, at Nestle. And, uh, he's very knowledgeable in planting and zoning through his work. He'd be a great asset in the commission and the city. And with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
Donnie Ewan made a motion. Jerry Bradley, second. Any discussion?
I've known Brent for probably twenty-five years, and I think he'd be good.
No more discussion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed with no. Uh, make sure he knows. Aye. This ordinance number seven thirty-two. Uh, this ordinance, uh, is to amend ordinance five five forty-eight related to the licensing and regulations of sexually oriented business. We discussed this at the last council meeting. Uh, we got sent back and we got the definitions right. And then we'll make sure we had everything correct on that, uh, that ordinance. So if it has any challenge, we make sure that we are, um, in accordance with the law on that ordinance. Uh, Ms. Hotty, would you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance seven thirty-two, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance amending ordinance five forty-eight related to the licensing and regulation of sexually oriented businesses to declare an emergency and for other purposes. City of Premon Art is all recognized the importance of fostering the safe environment and protect its residents and business from crime and risk our quality of life. And whereas documented evidence exists that sexually oriented businesses can have deleterious secondary effects and are often associated with crime and the downgrading of property values. And whereas in the authority of the city council of Premon Art is all to regulate sexually oriented businesses within its jurisdiction for the betterment of the community. Now therefore being ordained by the city council of Premon Art as follows. Section one. Section two of ordinance five forty-eight is amended to include the following definitions. Geographic materials shall include any obscene materials that are intended to sexually arouse or excite, including but not limited to magazines, books, videos, DVDs, and digital content. Sexual oriented toys and/or other paraphernalia shall include any obscene items designed or marketed for the purpose of sexual stimulation or gratification, including but not limited to sex toys and offense and related merchandise. Section two. Section three of ordinance five forty-eight is hereby amended to strike all references to seven hundred fifty feet as contained in said section and to replace the same with, with and at thousand feet. Section three. Section sixteen A of ordinance five forty-eight is hereby amended and strictly in its entirety and is replaced with the following language. A person who knowingly violates, disobeys, obets, neglects, or refuses to comply with or resist the enforcement of any of the provisions of this chapter shall be guilty of a violation and a conviction shall be punishable by a fine of one thousand dollars. Even if a violation of this ordinance shall constitute a separate offense, punishment will, as provided herein. Whether each day a violation is committed or permitted to continue shall constitute a separate offense and shall be fined accordingly. Section four. Any person in partnership with a corporation or other entity violation of this ordinance shall be subject to a fine of not less than five hundred dollars and not more than a thousand dollars for the first offense. No more than two thousand for second offense and no more than four thousand for third and subsequent offenses. Each day that a violation continues shall constitute a separate offense and a fine of five hundred dollars per day after third and subsequent offenses. Section five. If any provision or portion of this ordinance is determined to be invalid or unenforceable for any reason, the remaining provision shall remain in full course and effect. Section six. Due to the urgent need to protect public health, safety, and welfare, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the health and safety of the city of Premon. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and affect immediately upon its passage and approval.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Jerry Bradley made a motion.
Second.
Tammy Slanker, second. Any discussion? What year was ordinance five forty-eight? There was no one for it. It was pretty much. Thinking it was that thing that. That was a while back.
It was, uh, two thousand and ten is what.
Was it two thousand and ten?
July of eighteen, two thousand and ten.
Okay. Is that an amended version of, of the original or is, um, I think it was the original?
I think it's the original.
Something in my mind had to take, there was original, something that appeared, it was like this back in the school. Challenge for, um, it was all around the state back in the, um, I mean, I could be wrong, but, um, I mean, with five forty-eight, two thousand and ten would probably be about right based on the number one ordinance this actually is. I didn't know if it was something that stemmed back further or what. I know it came from that fifth one, it was like twenty, about seven pages or something like that.
Yeah, it's very long.
Yeah. It's true. Um, anyone in the audience have a comment on that? Okay, I've got a motion. Second. Uh, roll call vote please, Ms. Hotty.
Brent Parker.
For.
Bill's for. Kara Rogue.
For.
Tammy Slanker.
For.
Jerry Bradley.
For.
Jason Stewart.
For.
Hazel Riley, absent. Donnie Ewan.
For.
Sidney Wood.
For.
Linda Smith.
Absent.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve? Start reading the file. Jerry Bradley made a motion.
Motion.
Uh, Jason Stewart, second. Any discussion? If not, um, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed with no. Ms. Hotty, would you please read about how long it's second to read?
Ordinance seven thirty-two, twenty twenty-four. Amending ordinance five forty-eight related to the licensing and regulation of sexually oriented businesses to declare an emergency and for other purposes. Ordinance seven thirty-two, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance amending ordinance five forty-eight related to the licensing and regulation of sexually oriented businesses to declare an emergency and for other purposes.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Donnie Ewan made a motion.
Second.
Sidney Wood, second. Any discussion? All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed with no. Ordinance passes. All right. Next is ordinance number seven thirty-three. And so we can hopefully eliminate some question on this. I'll explain it to those that misunderstand the law. I'm reading the section of the two laws that govern the extinction of ATV, UTV, and golf carts. The ATV, UTV law, state law, that says it's illegal to drive it on the city streets, state highways, county roads. And it's one of the definitions. Recreational highway vehicle does not include a golf cart riding along or for lawn or garden tractor. And there's another law, fourteen fifty-four, fourteen ten. Operation of golf carts on city streets. It shall be within municipal affairs and authority of any municipality in the state of Arkansas to authorize by municipal ordinance any owner of a golf cart to operate the golf cart on the city streets in the municipality provided. However, operation shall not be authorized on city streets which are also designated as federal or state highways towards the county road. When authorized by the municipality to operate on city streets and limited to the circumstances and divisions of this section, there shall be no motor vehicle registration or license necessary to operate the golf cart on the public street. Municipality as using this section means any city of the first class, city of second class, or incorporated town. Now that's on the golf cart ordinance that we have here. Now, we've done the research. I've called Arkansas Municipal League to get some clarification. Uh, the league attorney told me that we can pass an ordinance that regulates golf carts on, on the highway, city streets. At those point can we put in an ordinance that allows a golf cart to cross state highway, federal highway, or county road? So they would have to stay on city streets. Now, the other side of that is currently there is no law that we can ride without a police officer. Can ride, uh, with the statute that says you can't ride on a golf cart on the city street. Only you cannot ride them on state highway, public highway, uh, federal highways, or county roads. That includes crossing. If I specifically asked them. Now, this ordinance that we've got drawn up, we spent about four hours last Tuesday night trying to get this ordinance worked out right. This is strictly for the safety of our citizens. That's why we brought this ordinance up. Now, we're going to read the ordinance. Uh, we're going to take a motion on it. And then you'll be allowed to, um, to comment. You want to comment on it? If the city council members, uh, vote approved, uh, public comment on this ordinance. So I'm going to ask, uh, Ms. Hotty if she would read ordinance number seven thirty-three.
Ordinance number seven thirty-three, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance allowing the operation of golf carts on city streets with the registration restricting their use on county, state, and federal highways pursuant to Arkansas code and dated fourteen fifty-four, fourteen, fourteen ten to establish penalties for violations to declare an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Premon has the authority to establish ordinances to control traffic and ensure safe travel within its boundaries. And whereas golf carts are modes of transportation that are commonly used in the city of Premon, but as a mode of transportation, golf carts can be unsafe in certain circumstances, including without limitation when operated on state or federal highways or county roads. And when operated by individuals under the age of fourteen who do not possess the license to operate a vehicle. And whereas the city of Premon recognizes the need for alternative transportation methods within the city limits. And whereas the city of Premon desires to regulate the use of golf carts on city streets to ensure the safety of its residents. Now therefore being ordained by the city council of the city of Premon, Arkansas, section one definitions. For the purposes of this ordinance, the following terms shall have the meaning respectively as prescribed to them. One point one, golf cart means a motor vehicle that is designed and manufactured for operation on a golf course for sporting or recreational purposes and that is not capable of exceeding speed of twenty miles per hour. Two, city streets means any public roadway maintained by the city of Premon, Arkansas, excluding county, state, and federal highways. Section two, permitted use. Two point one, pursuant to Arkansas code and date fourteen fifty-four, fourteen ten, golf carts are permitted to operate on city streets within the city limits of Premon, Arkansas, as set forth in this section. Two point two, pursuant to Arkansas code and date fourteen fifty-four, fourteen ten, golf carts are prohibited from operating on or crossing any county roads, state highway, or federal highway unless expressly permitted or special occasions approved by the Premon city council. Two point three, golf carts may only be operated on city streets during daylight hours, which is defined for purposes of this ordinance as thirty minutes before sunrise and thirty minutes after sunset, as declared by the National Weather Service. All golf carts operated on city streets shall be equipped with proper and fully functioning equipment to run and bike, which shall include at a minimum headlights, taillights, and brake lights. Section three, registration. Three point one, all golf carts operated on city streets must be registered by the owner with the city of Premon at the city municipal complex, the mayor's office, by July first of the current year prior to operating a golf cart on the city streets. A signed statement releasing the city from liability related to the operation of a golf cart within the city of Premon must be signed by the owner and submitted to the city prior to the issuance of a registration sticker. All owners shall be charged a fee of twenty-five dollars for the initial year, twenty-five dollars for each year of their effort, and a five dollar replacement fee for lost or damaged restriction stickers. Three point two, upon registration, the owner will receive an official registration sticker from the city of Premon that must be visibly attached at all times to the golf cart, clearly displayed on the left front fender corner of the golf cart. This registration sticker will only be valid for the calendar year that it was issued. Section four, operating requirements. Four point one, all golf cart operators must be fifteen years of age or older and possess a valid driver's license or a valid intermediate permit. Four point two, golf carts must obey all traffic laws applicable to motor violators of any part of this ordinance may be signed in accordance with the current municipal state or federal laws. Section five, liability insurance. A golf cart operated upon the city streets of Premon shall be covered by a policy of liability insurance with the required standard minimum policy limits as set by the state of Arkansas for motor vehicles traveling upon roadways within the state of Arkansas. Satisfied with proof of valid liability insurance as required herein, shall be provided by the owner of the city of Premon upon registration of the golf cart. It shall be kept in said golf cart while in operation upon the city streets and shall be presented to any law enforcement officer upon reasonable and lawful request. Section six, enforcement and penalties. Five point one, violation of any provision of this ordinance shall be considered a violation of the city ordinance. Five point two, any person found operating a golf cart in violation of any provision of this ordinance shall upon conviction be fined not less than one hundred dollars nor more than two hundred and fifty dollars for each offense. Any violation of this ordinance may result in the ripification of the permit for the current year of operating said golf, city streets and shall result in the imposition of the fines as set forth in the year and along with court costs. Section seven, effective date, this ordinance shall be in full force and, and in effect July first, twenty twenty-four. Section four, I mean, excuse me, section eight, severability. If any provision of this ordinance or an application thereof to any person or circumstance is held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect other provisions or applications of this ordinance that be given effect without the invalid provision or application. And to this end, the provisions of this ordinance are declared to be separable. Section nine, emergency clause. It is essential for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety that the provisions of this ordinance be enacted without delay, therefore, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and affect immediately upon passage and approval.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve?
You make a motion to approve.
Jerry Bradley made a motion to approve. Here, second. Is that a second? The ordinance has on the vote. That's it. Ma'am?
Took the comment to that. Do any of us want to speak on that issue?
Yes, ma'am. You can. It will. Let me rephrase that. The city council has to, the council has to approve it.
Has to approve, approve that first?
They have to approve you, the discussion. So I need a motion. Donnie Ewan made a motion to approve.
Second.
Brent Parker, second. Any discussion on that? All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed with no? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know. I'd like to know if we, any of us, would like to have a lower, a copy of that ordinance? Could we get a copy of that?
The ordinance didn't pass.
Oh, it hasn't passed yet?
It is not. It's not passed. It failed.
Oh, it failed?
Failed.
So there's nothing been done about the, the golf cart issue as a right now? So as a right now with the issue where the wish thing, uh, with a golf cart?
By state law, you can drive your golf cart on city streets. You cannot drive it on any state highway.
But you can still drive it on city streets as of now?
May. Unless somebody comes up with another ordinance later on, uh, you can't. You can't drive on Highway sixty-nine, four sixty-three, industrial, West Main, Ozark. Those are all state highways. So you can't drive them on those, on those streets.
And, um, like, like you said, stated in there, lights, brakes, horns, and all that stuff, is that something that's made it for now? Or is that when it passes?
Well, it, there's not even a, it's not going to pass because it's not going to be brought back up unless the council member brings it up and rewrites the ordinance. Uh, my, like I said before, my reason for bringing this ordinance up and writing this ordinance restricted for safety issues. Because there's nothing that says a three-year-old can't get out on a golf cart and ride.
That's a logic.
Period.
Period.
There's no state law that says they can't do. My thoughts were to at least regulate the ages and what they can do and whether they can legally drive or not for safety reasons. But it didn't pass. So the ordinance, the law is that if you're a golf cart, you can ride on any city street.
As of now? Without subject of, of fine or?
Yes, ma'am.
Or anything like that? Okay. That's what I wanted to know. What about the age group, uh, with mine, there's no age group right now?
Anyone else? All right. We're going to move on.
Hey, Dave, talk. Could I talk? Yes. Now, I know y'all was talking about ATVs and stuff.
We're talking about golf carts.
Oh, I can't talk about that?
Not ATVs yet.
Okay.
We're talking about, we're not, ATVs, we're talking about. Yeah, we're talking about golf carts.
Okay.
All right. So with that, we're going to move on to the next. Ordinance number seven thirty-four. It's an ordinance put on the ballot in November for voters to determine should council terms be made, uh, four-year staggered terms. We've had this before. It was in a special election. We're going to get the council approves it. We're going to run it in the general election. I just tell you my issue is exactly what I said before, the reason I think this needs to be, this has nothing to do with higher school or anything like that. You've got to grasp the vote. People in and out of office. The fact is, let's just take November for it and compare. Uh, you can vote all ten city council members off of this council. And then you're going to come in with a whole brand new council that has no clue what's going on. They don't have any, uh, possibly. I'm not saying that those elected wouldn't have some ideas, but the possibility that they would have no clue what's going on in the city government, how to operate, how to run, ride the rules of order, anything like that. If you go with staggered terms, then you can, every, every two years, you can replace five members if that's what you want to do. And that gives, that leaves you still got some experience on the council for that period of time. Now, that's my thoughts behind it. And there's numerous cities in, in, especially in Arkansas that do this. So with that, I'm going to have Ms. Hotty, if you would, uh, read ordinance number seven thirty-four.
Ordinance number seven thirty-four, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance refraining the voters for question four-year terms for aldermen of the city council of the city of Premon to set a date for such election and for other purposes. Whereas it has come to the attention of the city council for the city of Premon, Arkansas, that the Arkansas General Assembly passed Act five forty-three of, uh, twenty oh one, which gives cities of the first class the option of electing aldermen through staggered four-year terms. Whereas the city council finds that an election should be called on November fifth, twenty twenty-four for the specific purpose of referring the question to the voters of the city of Premon whether to elect aldermen from each ward to stagger four-year terms in accordance with Act five forty-three of twenty oh one of the Arkansas General Assembly. Now therefore being ordained by the city council of the city of Premon, Arkansas, section one, that there be and there called an election to be held on November fifth, twenty twenty-four. At which election there shall be submitted to the electors of the city of Premon, Arkansas, the question of electing aldermen from each ward to stagger four-year terms pursuant to Act five forty-three of twenty oh one of the Arkansas General Assembly. Section two, the question of electing aldermen from each ward to stagger four-year terms shall be placed on the ballot for the election as substantially the following manner. A vote on measure by placing an X in the square opposite the measure either for or against. For adoption to elect aldermen from each ward of the city of Premon, Arkansas, through staggered four-year terms. Beginning in twenty twenty-six, the city council, the Premon city council, position one, from each ward of the city of Premon shall be elected to a four-year term and shall continue to be elected to a four-year every four years thereafter, beginning in twenty twenty- beginning in twenty twenty-six, the Truman City Council, position two, from each ward shall be elected to a two-year term. And thereafter in twenty twenty-eight, the Truman City Council, position two, from each ward shall be elected to a four-year term and shall continue to be elected to a four-year term every four years thereafter, thereby resulting in staggered terms for members of the Truman City Council. Against, adoption to elect aldermen from each ward of the city of Truman, Arkansas, to staggered four-year terms, beginning in twenty twenty-six, Truman City Council, position one, from each ward of the city of Truman shall be elected to a four-year term and shall continue to a four-year term every four years thereafter, beginning in twenty twenty-six, Truman City Council, position two, from each ward shall be elected to a two-year term. Thereafter in twenty twenty-eight, the Truman City Council, position two, from each ward shall be elected to a four-year term and shall continue to be elected to a four-year term every four years thereafter, thereby resulting in staggered terms for members of the Truman City Council. Section three, that the election shall be held and conducted in the vote campus and the results declared under the law and in the manner now provided for municipal elections and only qualified voters of the city of Truman, Arkansas, shall have the right to vote at the election. Section four, that the results of the election shall be proclaimed by the mayor and this proclamation shall be published one time in a newspaper published in the city of Truman, Arkansas, having a general circulation therein, which proclamation shall advise that the result as proclaimed shall be inconclusive unless in fact in the course as provided by law. Section for sorting shall be given to the Pointe County Board of Election Commissioners so that the necessary election officials and supplies may be provided. Section six, that the mayor and city clerk, board, and on behalf of the city, thee and our hereby operated persons are required to do any and all things necessary to call and hold the election as herein provided. Section seven, that all ordinances and course thereof and common herewith are hereby repealed to the extent as such conflict.
All right, here a motion. Here a motion to approve.
Second.
Justice Stewart made a motion to approve. Donnie England, second. Any discussion? Anyone? Audience have a comment?
I do.
How do you do?
I have a comment.
Bonnie Winkles makes a motion.
Did you just ask if someone had a comment? Because I had a comment.
Hold on just a second. I've got the council to approve your comment. I've got the council to approve your comment.
I didn't, I didn't want to prove anybody right on that end here.
Tammy, make a second. Any discussion? All the favor say aye?
Aye.
The vote no?
Apologize, I was afraid because I was sitting down, you couldn't hear me. I was afraid because I was sitting down, you couldn't hear me. Um, is there a reason that we're bringing this back after we voted it down earlier this year?
Yes, uh, I was wanting my decision to bring it back. I brought it back because in the special election, there was like maybe a tent for voters that got to have a vote. I feel like this could be, probably general election, where we know there's going to be more voters and have the opportunity to vote, say, to actually.
Do you, do you remember how much that cost this year?
I don't know.
But it wasn't great.
I hate that bill.
But it was a couple, at least a few thousand, or it gets. So if it costs a few thousand dollars, feels that it was down for this year. Did any council member bring this to you?
No, I just told you I did my best.
So you look out consulting any council members or anyone in the public?
I consulted the council members previously on the last time that we brought it and later it passed.
At this time, we didn't.
Don't have to.
So I'll need this.
Okay.
Just make the motion, um, for.
Bonnie Winkles, second. Anybody else?
I think it's a very good idea to stagger, like you said. That way you got five on it all the time.
Anybody else? Any other discussion from the council? All the favor say aye? The vote no?
No.
Ms. Hotty, would you do a, go call both please?
Brett Parker?
No.
Bonnie Winkles?
No.
Uh, Kara Roach?
Four.
Tammy Slankert?
Four.
Jerry Bradley?
Four.
Jason Stewart?
Four.
Hazel Riley?
Babson.
Donnie England?
Four.
Sorry, what?
Four.
Sidney Wood?
Four.
And this man Babson.
Motion passes and it will be added to the ballot. We're going to finish up. Get back to my note for those there. All right, because of the timeframe to get it on the ballot, we would not be able to read this at council meetings. We would have it passed within the seventy-day limit prior to the election. So at this time, I'm going to, uh, see if we have anybody that will take a motion to suspend the rule. Justice Stewart made a motion.
Second.
Tammy Slankert, second. Any discussion? It was voted down once. Give three meetings, let people talk. I'm sorry. It was already voted down once. Give three meetings, let people talk.
What he's saying is invoking the emergency clause?
If we, that's what I'm saying, if we go three meetings, by the third meeting, we won't have enough time to introduce it again.
Should have brought it back, sir.
Any other discussion? All the motions made, the second. Ms. Hotty, go call both please and suspend the rule.
Brett Parker?
No.
Bonnie Winkles?
No.
Kara Roach?
Four.
Tammy Slankert?
Four.
Jerry Bradley?
Four.
Hazel Riley? Babson. Jason Stewart?
Four.
Donnie England?
Four.
Sidney Wood?
Four.
Motion to suspend the rule passes. We're going to ask that Ms. Hotty read by title only for the second and third reading.
Ordinance number seven thirty-four twenty twenty-four, an ordinance requiring to voters the question of staggered four-year terms for aldermen of the city council of the city of Truman to set a date for such election and for other purposes. Ordinance number seven thirty-four twenty twenty-four, an ordinance requiring to voters the question of staggered four-year terms for aldermen of the city council of the city of Truman to set a date for such election and for other purposes.
All right, here a motion to approve. Here Braden made a motion, your second. Here a motion, second. Any discussion? Go call both please, Ms. Hotty.
Brett Parker?
No.
Bonnie Winkles?
No.
Kara Roach?
Four.
Tammy Slankert?
Four.
Jerry Bradley?
Four.
Jason Stewart?
Four.
Hazel Riley?
Babson.
Donnie England?
Four.
Sidney Wood?
Four.
Motion passes. All right, next up is ordinance number seven thirty-five. It's an ordinance to accept and confirm the dedication of certain improvements in the development of slankers states. This is something we have to do once every time there's a development like that and it's time to be turned over. The city has to decide if affirmative or not. So Ms. Hotty, between you two, which?
Ordinance number seven thirty-five twenty twenty-four, an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain improvements in the development of slankers states declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Be ordained by the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas. Section one, pursuant to the authority and requirements of Arkansas COVID and P A fourteen three oh one, one oh two, the city of Truman sets and confirms dedication of the streets including Nelson Circle, as well as all easements, alleyways, drainage, and other improvements on the records plat of slankers states, Truman, Pointe County, Arkansas, seven two four seven two, on July, June, July eleventh, twenty twenty-four. All as more particularly nuchal and described on the final plat attached hereto as exhibit eight. Section two, the city council of the city of Truman hereby accepts all public improvements in the slankers states subdivision for ownership and maintenance. Section three, pursuant to said authority and the fulfillment of the provision as filled drawings evidencing the proper construction and installation of improvements, the satisfaction of all construction and installation requirements and the signing of the final plat. The city of Truman accepts and confirms that the improvement has indicated the public hereby deemed city property to be under the care of Truman. Section four, repealer. All other ordinances or resolutions or parts of ordinances or resolutions in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of conflict. Section five, severability, and any clause in or by section or other portion of this ordinance is found unconstitutional, invalid, or inoperative by a competent jurisdiction, such that it shall affect the validity of the written nature of these sections, nor shall any proceeding or validating any portion of any section operated to affect any portion of the remainder of said sections not specifically attached in said proceedings. Section six, the orderly growth in the newly subdivided area and in other areas of the city of Truman, Arkansas are necessary for the public peace, health, and safety. And our city is therefore declared, and this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage.
Here a motion to approve. Sidney Wood made a motion, Donnie England, second. You say on your agenda was to decide on a replacement for Councilwoman Lynn Smith. Ms. Smith has rescinded her resignation and will be back at the next council meeting. Our prayers essentially go out to Ms. Smith's loss of her mother, wish she were here today. And so Ms. Smith will be back on the council, make the council. Uh, next thing up is the situation. We've been discussing this quite a bit. Uh, we've discussed these issues in the past about ambulances coming from Jones World for one-third or more of our calls. I've had two ambulance services reach out and me about contracting with them. As I've said before, I'm not a fan of a contract for ambulances. Uh, but personally, I feel like it's a replacement now, we just haven't had much of a choice. And with that, both services have agreed to place two ambulances, ALS and ALS ambulances in the city of Truman. There's, you've all got a copy of both of their proposals, Medics ones, and the others from Southern Paramedic. Contacted them and told them that we would give them five minutes apiece to the council about their service and that you know what, what they're going to offer when you can replace them. So I'm going to start with Medics one. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask both of her two to come up and introduce themselves.
So, esteemed council members, thank you for your time this evening. I greatly appreciate a few minutes to speak about Medics one, our history serving the citizens of Truman, starting twenty-three years ago, and with consistent goal until the past seventy years in the city of Truman, where we hope to achieve a continued future partnership. As I said, my name is Will Rosenberg. I am the CEO and owner of Medics one, purchasing the company in January this year. I traveled here today approximately one thousand thirty miles because of what the city of Truman means to me in Medics one. I have plenty of incredible local leaders that could have tended without me. It was important to me tonight to share my own words with serving the town, I'm sorry, the city means to me in Medics one. As you will see shortly, although invited, the owner of Southern Parametics did not make the eighty mile journey to share the multiple members. When we started out in Truman in two thousand one, we started out in Truman in two thousand one and been operating consistently in Pointe Set County since two thousand three. At the time, Truman Ambulance Service and Truman Lifeline Ambulance Services in Harrisburg and Riverside was covered eastern side of Pointe Set, and it just wasn't enough call volume to support four ambulances services. Medics one did pull out at the time, Alaber shortly afterward purchased Lifeline and Harrisburg. We placed ambulance back in Truman full-time upon the request of the mayor in twenty seventeen. A little bit about what Medics one brings to the city of Truman. For the past seven years, we have faithfully provided the city with dedicated twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, advanced life support ambulance coverage without fail, without interruption. During that time, we've responded to eleven thousand two hundred and seventy-four requests for service and transported seven thousand two hundred and thirty-eight patients without incident, providing the highest level of care, of medical care available to your citizens. Medics one is concentrating on three core principles, customer service, safety, and compliance. And since January first, we have made significant investments in all three areas. All ambulances are equipped with power stretchers, power loading systems, the latest technology in cardiac monitoring, AI CP cameras, all with the goal to improve both the safety of the patient, but also the crew and comfort for the patient. These investments provide mobile access points to allow critical data transmission about the patient's hospital, real-time GPS location dispatch center, showing the closest appropriate ambulance to dispatch each and every time. A few months after I bought my call from your honorable Mayor Woods, leaving a message for me briefly stating his concerns, knowing the citizens of Truman are a valued customer and good customer service starts at the top, I called him back in less than an hour and we had a meeting in his office the next day. He was concerned too many trucks were coming from Jones World to serve in his growing city. I promised him with our new GPS-based CAD dispatching software, which we put in place as of April first, we'd evaluate that there's an anecdotal or there's a real problem to be addressed. In early May, I went back to Mayor Woods and told him we'd be happy to add additional ambulance truck to the city of Truman, provided if your work had a place to house it as originally proposed. We made this decision after evaluating the data and discovering that on a monthly basis, the dedicated Truman truck responded to one hundred and seventy-six calls with a hundred transports. Additionally, we responded into Truman from either Jones World or Harrisburg sixty-three times, with thirty-eight of those resulting transports, and that is simply too many times where a citizen had to wait. We looked a little deeper into this, there's a lot of great news when it comes to mutual aid from Medics one. Medics one currently has ten trucks on any given day that are within fifteen-minute response time of Truman, whether for a call surge or the unthinkable disaster, such as the twenty-eight on the twenty twenty-one where we pulled five additional trucks into Truman in less than thirty minutes. In addition to trucks, we provide support staff, maintenance, and have leadership working in the command post as part of the unified dispatch command, all because your citizens matter to Medics one. Conversely, our competitor here tonight, the next closest ambulance, is either coming from Lynn, forty-five miles away, Newport, sixty miles away, or Brinkley, eighty miles away. Our motto with Medics one is let seconds count, choose Medics one. Well, council members, this isn't seconds we're talking about, this is minutes to hours, when your loved one could be suffering the unthinkable medical emergency. And once that someone tell me EMS was like a marriage, it often starts off with a bang, one partner comes in and promises the world, and over time, things change, expectations are not met, and one partner ends up angry or disappointed. Out of that theory, I've been happily married for nineteen years, and like a good marriage, we've been serving the city of Truman for seven years, without disappointment or without failure. Other services will promise the world, but when the rubber meets the road, they aren't able to deliver. Medics one is committed to guaranteeing you true dedicated, as the mayor said, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five resources, free of charge to the towns for the next three years in exchange for simply continuing our trench valued partnership centered on the highest level of clinical care available and a phenomenal working partnership with both the city, fire, and police department on a daily basis for the past seven years with over a fat eleven thousand patient interactions. Thank you. If you have any kind of questions to ask me, I'd be happy to answer and what we can do for you and the citizens going forward.
Do I have any questions?
I'd like to make a comment. I, I didn't really think about that situation, really. I mean, you know, I had not dug into it, so I dug into it yesterday. And I spent a lot of time with the men questioning, looking at the, obviously impressed with the ambulance, because I had worked for the police department in domestic violence up in North Carolina, and it's been a few years, but boy, you all had that thing equipped. I mean, I was, it was, it's amazing, the equipment that they have on that thing, it's in my mind. I, I, I was very impressed with what I'm shown.
Well, thank you, ma'am. We spend a lot of money and time making sure the highest level of clinical care is available.
I could tell.
Time is important, but quality of the care is equally important.
Any other questions?
We are talking about the expansion here in Truman, not Pointe Set County.
Yes, ma'am. Two in the city of Truman. One at the base that apparently exists, also from the, I want to call it one of the fire departments, it's the Sioux City Fire Department, and then one either of possibly the It's the Sioux Fire Department, and then one either possibly of the public works.
Is he holding the whole water on?
Or is that, that's the internal competition that's going on. So you got right in the center of the city.
Thank you, Will Rosenberg.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Bill Neers. I'm Chief Operations Officer for Southern Paramedic, Southern Care Ambulance, as well as White River Ambulance. We, we're approaching our 25th anniversary with our current leadership within the organization. We service seven counties from 11 different facilities throughout the state here. We are one of seven CAS accredited ambulance agencies in the state, and we are focused on clinical excellence, quality service. We have looked at the city as well as the entire county of what the ambulance needs are. We believe we have a good answer, good solution for specifically the City of Truman, because realistically, the Truman is the, is the, is the property that basically needs, has the highest population, has the highest number of ambulance service. In looking at it, we looked at, we decided that we believe that would be, two ambulances would be required for the city. There would be additional resources, obviously, that would be needed. There are two other communities in Point Set County that have asked us to provide them ambulance service. We are holding off on that until we see what happens here within the City of Truman, because again, this is certainly a pivotal point within the county. We've offered two ambulances dedicated to the city with no financial obligation, no financial request for those ambulance services. We believe it could be done for paid or service within the county. One absolutely would be at the paramedic level. The other one would either be at an advanced level or at a basic level. We, we do have one ambulance located that would cover a different area of the county as well, and again, we would have to work, we would be working with those other communities to provide the mutual aid and overflow for care. In speaking with other ambulance agencies, we do have two other ambulances that have agreed to sign mutual aid agreements. So in the event that all of our ambulances are tied up within the county, we would have additional ambulance resources to send here. As mentioned, we do have other ambulances in other counties, neighboring, in neighboring counties. We certainly do, but they wouldn't be necessarily the only ones that we would rely on. Speaking of developing EMS and Emerson both, they were more than willing to provide us a mutual aid agreement. So we believe that we can serve the city here without fail exceptionally well. In addition, a couple of the things that we focus on, our vehicles. We replace our vehicles at every 300,000 miles or less. We don't run longer than that. We've invested in the exact same equipment, power stretchers, power load systems for the safety of our people as well as the safety of the rest of them and several trains for you. We also have invested in body cameras for our staff. We have unfortunately grown into too many incidents in the last couple of months specifically of where we feel that they're necessary, and they have been providing some significant success for us for the couple incidents we had. All of our vehicles are GPS tracked as well. Our system picks out the closest ambulance to provide service. So really, it's kind of all there for sure. One of the things that I believe that is a benefit to the city here with Southern is we aren't, our vehicles aren't in the Craighead County system, meaning that if we go into Craighead County, they're not tracked, they're not going to be pulled for other calls outside of the county here and outside of the city. So when our vehicle goes there, it's going to come back to the City of Truman. That's really what we wanted to, the points that we wanted to touch on in the 25 points that we identified here. Those are the most important ones that we see, but like I said, I think that's probably the most important aspect, is ambulances that are here in, here within the City of Truman would be returning to the City of Truman. It wouldn't be whichever ambulance could make it back. So, do you have any questions for me at all?
Any questions or comments? By the audience.
I'm going to say on my part, I mean, I have researched both ambulance services. Medic One has treated our citizens very well. The only issue that I had with them was exactly what Mr. Rosenberg brought up, and what I brought up was the third ambulance calls coming from Jonesboro. That was a big issue in my opinion. That was where this whole thing come about. Rosenberg has agreed, Mr. Neers has agreed, that they will put two ambulances here in town. Research that I've done on Southern Parametics, I've not found any issues from their cities that they're in, the counties that they're in. So for me to sit here and say that Southern Parametics could not handle, the load couldn't handle the situation, I can't say that. To say, let's just be honest, we know what we've got. We know they have treated our people well. So I'm not going to make my thoughts known about who to decide, what's going to be up to you. If you even wanted to decide making the, to vote on this, even though, with the contract and particular service. So I need some comments and some thoughts.
How long was the contract for?
With Medic One, it was three years contract. With Southern Paramedic, we didn't, I don't think we had to set a date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, my man. It was a one-year contracts with four automatic renewals. That way, if you wanted to extend it, you could. If you want to cancel, you could as well.
When I was reading it, I noticed that, I believe it was in Southern Paramedic, one stated that if they weren't available, the two ambulances weren't available, we could get for any ambulance service, correct? So that's the same Paramedic one? I didn't notice that in there.
We always send the closest ambulance. We just happen to have a lot of resources that are already circling the city. And just for a point of clarity, since I do have a floor, Truman, I'm sorry, the Truman ambulances are never pulled in the Craighead system. They aren't even registered in Craighead. So I appreciate.
And I'll say this, we had discussed that, old companies wanted exclusive rights, and I probably, I would not prove exclusive rights for that reason, because they've got two ambulances in town, and they're both young, and we've got emergency closest ambulance, Marktree or Delta or whoever, that's a label, we're going to call them. It won't have to be bound to a particular company because they have exclusive rights.
So speaking for us, and I'll let him speak for himself, exclusive rights doesn't mean we're not getting the closest ambulance. That's the most ethical thing to do. And I think everyone in our profession, even my competitor here, would say the same thing. To me, exclusive rights is that we're the first two calls, and then the next closest ambulance is the next closest. So I guess that's.
And I agree, I agree that we would do that without exclusive rights. You, you've got two ambulances, you'll be the first two calling. You'll be the third one calling until you tell me you don't have any more ambulance. It'd be the same way with Southern Paramedic, because they don't have an ambulance closer, that'd be who we'd call. But if we don't have exclusive rights, it does technically bound the ambulance. And I'm looking out for our citizens, and that's my number one priority. That's why we look back and go down that route. Do you hear a suggestion or two to check on on these two? I'm ready to go. I mean, I want to get a chance to sit down and talk to two chiefs and potentially inform dispatch or whoever else. I want to get a feel of what the folks who are having to deal with the ambulance service on a daily basis, their feel about it. I'll make a decision and injure reaction based on price or how filled our cell is. I can make the wrong decision real quick. So I'd like to, I would like to discuss that. Good luck, chief. That's a good comment. So, do y'all think that we need to put this off in one month, two months? I think we just need to go off first. We need to have fire, police, they, down, so it's off. So at this point, then, selection of ambulance service, hopefully decide who is going to be tabled in one month. Let y'all know. Any other questions or comments? By the way, they're still in town. They're still, we're not going to. Anybody that's like without an ambulance, we're not going to. Sorry. Then you're not, then you're not. Anything else?
I'd like to say, gentlemen, thank you both for coming in and talking to the council. It's good to face with the company and be able to know who we're dealing with. So thank you for that.
All right. At this time, I would like to introduce, or let them introduce, our very first mayor's council. And I'm going to ask each one of our mayor's councils, youth council, mayor's youth council, if they would step up and call up to the front so we can let people know who you are and who this is where you're in. Everybody jumps for it. We're going to start on this end. If you hold position, position as well.
I'm Alanya.
Alanya O'Leary.
Alanya Jonathan.
Just give them a round of applause. At this time, I'm sorry, go ahead. At this time, we're going to swear you in with the oath of office. So I'm going to ask everyone to raise your right hand, and figure out who they are, and say aye if you've called your name. So I solemnly swear, affirm that I will support, uphold, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. Do you have a minute? We're grabbing you up. I solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, uphold, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. And the laws thereof, support, uphold, and defend the Constitution and laws of the State Not inconsistent therewith, that I will observe and obey the laws and ordinances of the City of Truman, that I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties incumbent upon me as a member of Truman Mayor's Youth Council fairly and honestly and in the best of my skills and abilities. All right. Thank you. Lawrence. Is that right, Alana? The young men and women will be doing a lot of activities throughout the city to promote the youth. They will meet on a regular basis and grant ideas off to our council and forth back to our council. And hopefully, I hope they, I know they're going to be a great addition to the City of Truman.
They're graduating, they're going to take our jobs.
Mayor, I want to, I want to give the students who are coming out. High school nurse, hey, there we go. High school nurse told me to give me a list of names for all the city council members to get spit on in the jail cell when we get done here tonight, so y'all all know who you All right. Thank you all. And next, we've got several resolutions for combination. Some of these have already been taken care of, so I'm going to let Captain Henry report on these for me, so we'll know which ones have been taken care of and which ones we need to bring up some direction.
All right. So in your list, you'll see Resolution Number 1250, 245 Pine. That was bought by Truman High School. They have raised and leveled the ground, and it's cleaned up. We'll start now with Resolution Number 1248. And I'm going to ask you, Mr. Taddy, if you will read Resolution Number 1248.
Resolution Number 1248, 2024. A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 114 Bady in the City of Truman to constitute a public nuisance and condemning those structures providing periods of time for property owner to evade said nuisance and for other purposes. Whereas the buildings or structures whose location is set forth herein are vacant and have become rundown, dilapidated, and slightly dangerous, so not just unsafe, not be according to human habitation, and detrimental to the public welfare of Truman's citizens and residents. And whereas the condition of such property constitutes a serious fire and health hazard to the City of Truman and allows immediate actions are taken to remedy this situation by removing and raising this said nuisance, there is a great likelihood that the surrounding property may be destroyed by fire rich nailing from such unsafe and hazardous structures, and also that since structures are without proper sanitary facilities, and as such are unsafe and hazardous and a breeding place for rats, rodents, and other dangerous term carriers of diseases, such building a serious hazard to the health and safety of the citizens of Truman and they should be raised for the purpose of eliminating such hazards. Now therefore, they are resolved by the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas. Section one, that the city council hereby declares the buildings, houses, and other structures located at the property identified in section two below to be vacant and rundown, dilapidated, unsafe, unsafe, dangerous, obnoxious, unsanitary, a fire hazard, a minister of burning properties with the current condition of said structures not being fit for human habitation. And because of such conditions, the city council declares the site to be condemned as a public nuisance and is ordered to remove or raise by the owner thereof. Section two, that the owner of record of the following described property is hereby directed to begin work to raise the structure and/or structures or otherwise evade the said nuisance within thirty days and complete the work within sixty days after the posting of a true copy of this resolution and conspicuous place upon the structure constituting the nuisance described herein to wit. Lot forty eight, lot three, RL Hayes subdivision, parcel number five 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 dash zero zero nine zero nine dash zero 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 to the city of Truman, Placent County, Arkansas, located at one fourteen Betty and is owned by J. B. Reeves. Section three, if work has not begun on the aforementioned structure and/or structures to raise and or remove within thirty days and work has not been completed within sixty days after posting a true copy of this resolution and a conspicuous place upon the structure and/or structures constituting the nuisance or the nuisance otherwise evaded, the structure and/or structures shall be torn down and/or removed by the director of public works or his newly designated representative. A citation may be issued from court and shall be deemed a misdemeanor upon conviction and shall be punishable by fine of not less than one hundred dollars nor more than five hundred dollars or imprisonment for a term not to exceed thirty days or both at the discretion of the court. Each day after the course set thirty days in which said nuisance is not raised and removed and shall constitute a separate and distinct offense punishable by a fine of twenty five dollars for each such separate and distinct offense. Furthermore, the city of Truman may file a lien on said property under Arkansas code fourteen fifty four nine oh one dash nine oh two dash nine oh three dash nine oh four with the attorney of court and or tax collector of Placent County. Section four, that the provisions of this resolution are hereby declared to be severable and if any section, phrase, or provision shall be declared or held invalid, such a validity shall not affect the remainder of the sections, phrases, or provisions. Section five, that this resolution shall be enforced and effect from and after its passage in the court.
Is there anyone here for one fourteen Betty?
I am. That house had two broken windows in it. Actually, they was flexed last. I put in an hexane. There's no holes in the walls, there's no holes in the ceiling. Y'all want to look at the video before I come over here. Yard gets kept mowed. So I use it as a storage shed. I don't use it as a house. I use it as a storage shed. Electricity at the residence, bill's never been invaded.
Anything else?
There's another one on there about.
We'll get to that. Okay. You say here one at that.
One at that.
Your chair, you can get inside.
No, the fact that he said he uses a storage building, he did have some broken windows.
Yeah, I do.
Like when I drove by today, he replaced the windows.
Yeah, I left the covering on the bottom one, so it couldn't nobody look in.
And just the fact that it is, it's an older house, it's sat there for a long time, it's vacant. He had used for storage. He's in the residential area, he's just sitting there.
Any questions, comments for either one of them?
They got running water.
Oh no, it's a storage shed, no running water. It's just got electricity. I use electricity. I need to touch something or have lights in there to look around and see what I got. If you want to see a video, I got a video.
Is your house beside it? Do you have a home beside it?
There's another house beside it.
It's not your house?
Yes, it is my house.
He doesn't think that it is.
No, it's not an house. No, I don't live there, no.
Then this house is back your house?
Yes.
And it's your storage, house and storage.
Well, both of them are storage shed.
Both storage.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I.
Okay, so you don't have it beside it?
Oh, no, no, no.
It's run down.
So it's.
The windows were broken, the windows, but I mean it's a run down, older house.
Probably back in the twenties or thirties.
There you go.
Just the roof and all that, can you get a shot?
I ain't going to say it's the best shape. We're going to be needing a replacement in the next ten years. There's no holes, no leaking water in it. Singles are still good on it. Well, half life on them.
They haven't passed seven days, they wanted the house. Pretty as a metal.
Do you have the type of building anywhere else to use at your home for storage? A building at your home instead of using this? Is this for business and storage or personal?
Well, I've got a few rental properties in town, I use it. Store my materials in there.
I guess, if you have any more questions to come, I'm going to vote to approve or not.
Well, it looks a lot bigger than the one in the homes. And if it doesn't break and it's molded, it'll tap.
Well, I keep the yard mowed every probably ten days to two weeks, according on the weather. Some days, when the summer gets hot and dry, two weeks is all it needs.
Gary, does anybody else complain?
They have, and remember they may have a member, I think it's Mr. Schmidt, whoever comes with him, we always have him about that list. And I think you remember, I told him that we could, we work on it, and here we are.
What is the willing count?
I'd say let it stay as long as he keeps it up.
You don't make a motion?
If I don't have a motion to approve, then this regulation will die. That was.
Will not be.
That one will not be. Not right now. It runs down more. That's the saying, can't come back later. So, alright, that was one fourteen Betty. The next one is resolution twelve forty nine, two oh eight North Ozark, lot three A, block six, Springfield lumber and coal out second. Anybody here for that property? Alright, Mr. Totti, will you read resolution number twelve forty nine?
Resolution number twelve forty nine, twenty twenty four. A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at four eight North Ozark in the city of Truman constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures providing a period of time for property owner to evade said nuisance and for other purposes. Whereas the buildings and structures whose location is set forth herein are vacant and have become rundown, dilapidated, unsafe, dangerous, obnoxious, unsafe, not fit for human habitation, and detrimental to the public welfare of Truman's citizens and residents. And whereas the condition of such property constitutes a serious fire and health hazard to the city of Truman and unless immediate actions are taken to remedy this situation by removing and raising this said nuisance, there is a great likelihood that the surrounding property may be destroyed originally for such unsafe hazardous structures and hazardous structures and also that certain structures are without proper sanitary facilities and as such are unsafe and hazardous and a breeding place for rats, rodents, and other dangerous term carriers of diseases. Such buildings constitute a serious hazard to the health and safety of the citizens of Truman and they should be removed or raised for the purpose of eliminating such hazards. Now therefore, they are resolved by the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas. Section one, that the city council hereby declares the building, houses, and other structures located at the property identified in section two below to be vacant and rundown, dilapidated, unsafe, unsafe, dangerous, obnoxious, unsanitary, a fire hazard, a minister of burning properties and with the current condition of said structures not being fit for human habitation because of such conditions. The city council declares the site to be condemned as a public nuisance and is ordered to remove or raise by owner thereof. Section two, that the owner of record of the following described property is hereby directed to begin work to raise the structure and/or structures or otherwise evade the said nuisance within thirty days and complete the work within sixty days after the posting of a true copy of this resolution and a conspicuous place upon the structure constituting the nuisance described herein to wit. Lot two, three A of block six of Springfield lumber and four of this second subdivision. Parcel number five 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 dash zero zero one five zero dash zero 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 to the city of Truman, Placent County, Arkansas, located at four eight North Ozark and is owned by Jose and Maria Martinez. Section three, if work has not begun on the aforementioned structure and/or structures to raise and/or remove them within thirty days and work has not been completed within sixty days after posting a true copy of this resolution and a conspicuous place upon the structure and/or structures constituting the nuisance or the nuisance otherwise evaded, the structure and/or structures shall be torn down and or removed by the director of public works or his newly designated representative. A citation may be issued from court and shall be deemed a misdemeanor upon conviction and shall be punishable by a fine of not less than one hundred dollars nor more than five hundred dollars or imprisonment for a term not to exceed thirty days or both at the discretion of the court. Each day after the course set thirty days in which said nuisance is not raised and removed and shall constitute a separate and distinct offense punishable by a fine of twenty five dollars for each such separate and distinct offense. Furthermore, the city of Truman may file a lien on said property under code Arkansas code fourteen dash big four dash nine oh one dash nine oh two dash nine oh three dash nine oh four with the attorney of court and or the tax collector of Placent County. Section four, that the provisions of this resolution are hereby declared to be severable and if any section, phrase, or provision shall be declared or held invalid, such a validity shall not affect the remainder of the sections, phrases, or provisions. Section five, that this resolution shall be enforced and effect from and after its passage in the court.
Captain Henry, would you give us a little better description where we were at?
Yeah, they have photographs, hopefully it's on, uh, North Ozark, a property of the house and a couple of mobile homes there. That one that I had, the photographs have been blown off of and falling apart. I spoke to the owner. He was speaking in the trailer, so the sun called me to recall that his intention was to take it down, get rid of it, and he was salvaging the front. And so far, he's got half of it taped down, he's still working on it. So, I still recommend only nation that way. It's a left sixty to ninety days. And he said he had a finish button, but just in case he doesn't.
Make a motion.
Captain, make a motion, Bonnie, twinkle second, any discussion?
Aren't there two trailers actually on that property? Okay, they're both okay.
We got a motion in the second. All the players say aye. Opposed, no. Twelve forty nine, that's it. Alright, next one of course, twelve fifty, and we've already taken care of that one. Next is resolution number twelve fifty one, four twenty five Harrison, Magna Stacks. Somebody's here for four twenty five Harrison. Mr. Totti, would you read resolution number four one, please?
Resolution number twelve fifty one dash twenty twenty four. A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at four twenty five Harrison in the city of Truman constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures providing a period of time for property owner to evade said nuisance and for other purposes. Whereas the buildings and structures whose location is set forth herein are vacant and have become rundown, dilapidated, unsafe, dangerous, obnoxious, unsafe, not fit for human habitation and detrimental to the public welfare of Truman's citizens and residents. And whereas the condition of such property constitutes a serious fire and health hazard to the city of Truman and unless immediate actions are taken to remedy this situation by removing and raising said nuisance, there is a great likelihood that the surrounding property may be destroyed by fire richening from such unsafe and hazardous structures and also that certain structures are without proper sanitary facilities and as such are unsafe and hazardous and a breeding place for rats, rodents, and other dangerous term carriers of diseases. Such buildings constitute a serious hazard to the health and safety of the citizens of Truman and they should be removed or raised for the purpose of eliminating such hazards. Now therefore, they are resolved by the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas. Section one, that the city council hereby declares the buildings, houses, and other structures located at the property identified in section two below to be vacant and rundown, dilapidated, unsafe, unsafe, dangerous, obnoxious, unsafe, unsanitary, a fire hazard, a minister of burning properties with the current condition of said structures not being fit for human habitation and because of such conditions, the city council declares the site to be condemned as a public nuisance and is ordered to remove or raise by the owner thereof. Section two, that the owner of record of the following described property is hereby directed to begin work to raise the structure and/or structures or otherwise evade the said nuisance within thirty days and complete the work within sixty days after the posting of a true copy of this resolution and a conspicuous place upon the structure constituting the nuisance described herein to wit. Lot five of block C of Harrison, Douglas subdivision, parcel number five 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 dash zero zero six six three dash zero 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 to the city of Truman, Placent County, Arkansas, located at four twenty five Harrison and is owned by Magna Stacks. Section three, if work has not begun on the aforementioned structure and/or structures to raise and or remove within thirty days and work has not been completed within sixty days after posting a true copy of this resolution and a conspicuous place upon the structure and/or structures constituting the nuisance or the nuisance otherwise evaded and the structure and/or structures shall be torn down and or removed by the director of public works or his newly designated representative. A citation may be issued from court and shall be deemed a misdemeanor upon conviction and shall be punishable by a fine of not less than one hundred dollars nor more than five hundred dollars or imprisonment for a term not to exceed thirty days or both at the discretion of the court. Each day after the course set thirty days in which said nuisance is not raised and removed and shall constitute a separate and distinct offense punishable by a fine of twenty five dollars for each such separate and distinct offense. Furthermore, the city of Truman may file a lien on said Arkansas code fourteen dash big four dash nine oh one dash nine oh two dash nine oh three dash nine oh four with the circuit court and or tax collector of Placent County. Section four, that the provisions of this resolution are hereby declared to be severable and if any section, phrase, or provision shall be declared or held invalid, such a validity shall not affect the remainder of the sections, phrases, or provisions. Section five, that this resolution shall be enforced and effect from and after its passage in the court.
Once again, is there anyone here speaking for that property? Did I hear a motion to approve? Bonnie, make a motion, see if you would second, any discussion? All the players say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next up, resolution number twelve fifty two, five fifteen short, lot fifteen. This again will be James and Betty Reeves, this is here.
Now on that one, I done told James, what was his name, Hagan? He was over on a sewer leak that I got. And I told him that I was going to have that house torn down. Long after that, I got notice on it. My wife has been calling for a month trying to get the price of it. She got it yesterday. I have no problem with that being torn down, I was going to tear it down anyway. And hopefully by Friday, the city had the money, they're just trying to figure out. And hopefully by Friday, the, the city had the money, they're just trying to figure out.
And unless immediate actions are taken to remedy the situation by removing and raising this nuisance, there is a great likelihood that the surrounding property may be destroyed by fire originated from such unsafe and hazardous structures, and also that said structures are without proper sanitary facilities, and as such are unsafe hazards, and a breeding place for rats, others, dangerous germs, carriers, and diseases. Such buildings constitute a serious hazard to the health and safety of citizens of Prentice, and they should be removed or raised for the purpose of eliminating such hazards. Now therefore, being resolved by the City Council of the City of Prentice, Arkansas, section one, that the City Council hereby declares the buildings, houses, and other structures located at the property identified in section two below to be vacant and run down, dilapidated, unsafe, dangerously dangerous, obnoxious, unsafe, a fire hazard, a menace to a body of properties, with the current condition of said structures not being fit for human habitation, and because of such conditions, the City Council declares the same to be condemned as a public nuisance and is ordered to remove or raise by the owner thereof. Section two, that the owner of record of the following described property is hereby directed to begin work to raise the structure and/or structures or otherwise abate the said nuisance within thirty days and complete work within sixty days after the posting of a true copy of this resolution edict conspicuous upon the structure constituting the nuisance described, law fifteen of block two of RL Hayes subdivision, parcel number five-five-five dash zero-zero-eight-four-zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero to the City of Prentice County Arkansas, located at five fifteen short, and is owned by James and Betty Reeves. Section three, if work has not been done on the aforementioned structure and/or structures to raise and or remove them within thirty days, and work has not been completed within sixty days after posting a true copy of this resolution edict conspicuous upon the structure and/or structures constituting the nuisance, or the nuisance otherwise evaded, the structure and/or structures shall be torn down and/or removed by the Director of Public Works or his newly designated representative. A citation may be issued from court and shall be deemed a misdemeanor upon conviction and shall be punishable by a fine of not less than, of not less than one hundred dollars nor more than five hundred dollars or imprisonment for a term not to exceed thirty days or both at the discretion of the court. Each day after the course set thirty days in which said nuisance is not raised and removed shall constitute a separate and distinct offense punishable by a fine of twenty-five dollars for each separate and distinct offense. Furthermore, the City of Prentice may file a lien on said property, Arkansas code fourteen dash big four dash nine-oh-one dash nine-oh-two dash nine-oh-three dash nine-oh-four with the Circuit Court and/or Tax Department of Arkansas County. Section four, that the provisions of this resolution are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section phrase or provision shall be declared or held invalid, such impunity shall not affect the remainder of the section's phrases or provisions. Section five, that this resolution shall be enforced and effective from and after its passage in the court.
Hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Care of, road, make a motion?
No.
Oh, is that wrong? Okay, I'm sorry.
But I don't think.
Bobby, make a motion, care of road, second, any discussion?
Can I add one more comment?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I was talking about that sewer problem we had back there, do y'all know when that's gonna be resolved?
We can discuss that after, after council, we can talk and change about that.
Okay.
That, that kinda gets off, off the, off the line. Uh, no other discussion, all the favor say aye? Oppose, no? All right, the last one, and a resolution number twelve fifty-three, six twenty-eight Edgerton, Bobby, anybody here to speak for them on that property?
I don't think they own it.
I apologize, it still shows that you own our record, but that doesn't mean that Tommy Corn to talk about purchasing, but I don't know if it's actually finished, damn it right now.
You said it, big boy.
Yeah, I think Tommy bought it.
Yeah, Tommy was telling me, yes, it's just a device, I wish to show it before you could, yeah, on that day, I don't know.
All right, Mr. Hodie, the three groups from twelve fifty-three, please.
Resolution number twelve fifty-three dash twenty-four. Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at four twenty-eight eight twenty in the City of Prentice to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owners to abate said nuisance and for other purposes. Whereas the buildings and structures whose location is step forth here and or vacant and have become run down, dilapidated, and slightly dangerous, obnoxious, unsafe, not fit for human habitation and detrimental to the welfare of citizens and residents, and whereas the condition of such property constitutes, constitutes a serious fire and health hazard to the City of Prentice, and unless immediate actions are taken to remedy this situation by removing and raising the said nuisance, there is a great likelihood that the surrounding property may be destroyed by fire originated from such unsafe and hazardous structures, and also that said structures are without proper sanitary facilities, and as such are unsafe hazards, and a breeding place for rats, others, other dangerous germs, carriers, and diseases. Such buildings constitute a serious hazard to the health and safety of the citizens of Prentice, and they should be removed or raised for the purpose of eliminating such hazards. Now therefore, being resolved by the City Council of the City of Prentice, Arkansas, section one, that the City Council hereby declares the buildings, houses, and other structures located at the property identified in section two below to be vacant and run down, dilapidated, unsafe, dangerously dangerous, obnoxious, unsafe, a fire hazard, menace to a body of properties, with the current condition of said structures not being fit for human habitation, and because of such conditions, the City Council declares the same to be condemned as a public nuisance, and is ordered to remove or raise by the owner thereof. Section two, that the owner of said, owner of record of the following described property is hereby directed to begin work to raise the structure and/or structures or otherwise abate the said nuisance within thirty days and complete work within sixty days after the posting of a true copy of this resolution edict conspicuous upon the structure constituting the nuisance described here and to where. Block sixteen of block E of the, second subdivision, parcel number five-five-five dash zero-one-zero-eight-six-zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero to the City of Prentice County Arkansas, located at six twenty-eight Edgerton, and is owned by Bobby and Bobby Shaw. Section three, if work has not been done on the aforementioned structure and/or structures to raise and or remove them within thirty days, and work has not been completed within sixty days after posting the true copy of this resolution edict conspicuous upon the structure and/or structures constituting the nuisance or the nuisance otherwise evaded, the structure and/or structures shall be torn down and or removed by the Director of Public Works or his newly designated representative. A citation may be issued from court and shall be deemed a misdemeanor upon conviction and shall be punishable by a fine of not less than one hundred dollars nor more than five hundred dollars or imprisonment for a term not to exceed thirty days or both at the discretion of the court. Each day after the course set thirty days in which said nuisance is not raised and removed shall constitute a separate and distinct offense punishable by a fine of twenty-five dollars for each such separate and distinct offense. Furthermore, the City of Prentice may file a lien on said property of Arkansas code fourteen dash big four dash nine-oh-one dash nine-oh-two dash nine-oh-three dash nine-oh-four with concern for and/or the tax collector of Prentice County. Section four, that the provisions of this resolution are hereby declared to be severable. If any section phrase, section phrase or provision shall be declared or held invalid, such impunity shall not affect the remainder of the section's phrases or provisions. Section five, that this resolution shall be enforced and effective from and after its passage in the court.
Against the, against big four or against that, this property? Not, I have a motion to.
Make a motion.
Bobby, make a motion, care of ground, second, open discussion. If not, all the favor say aye? Oppose, no? And, uh, that's all on the agenda, next is, uh, Mayor's report. Fire station is still on schedule at the moment, uh, for late September, early October completion. Uh, we've had kickoff meeting with the EDA on the pier water tank, to hope to catch some destruction, hopefully about August, if we can get off, testing and bidding completed. Uh, I want to thank our city work crews for continuing to keep putting out the trash on the side of the streets and the ditches, unfortunately, so many people are concerned, uh, and continue to litter our streets. I hope we can find a way to combat this issue, so. I want to thank Bob Sal, uh, our treasurer, and our team at the office and the city clerk. I was on vacation two weeks ago, we had a great time. Uh, the next three days, I'll be going to the Arkansas Medical League, uh, summer conference along with, uh, Karen, our city clerk, uh, James Pagan, and Minister Assistant Dennis Shaw. So, we'll be home in the next three days, but Bob will be there, everything will be good. And that's all I have with that, uh. Did you get our other comments?
Mary Draper. I'm only spoke. Mary Draper. I'll keep it short, you guys have in your council page eleven, there's a picture twelve. It's gonna show our park department time and our parks complex time. So, the reason I ask how much that council extended our budget costs is because we're currently not seeing reflected in our budget the repairs and the maintenance that we need for some of these parks. I didn't make a pick on you for minutes, but I have to, to drive it home. But we're about to enter into an era where we're gonna build something really cool in Prentice, recreation wise, which is why you see a lot of people here upset about the golf carts, because recreation wise, we don't have a lot of options yet, Prentice. But before we ask taxpayers to invest more of their tax money into something like a flight facility, we have gotta be good stewards of what we have currently in our country. And I would not be as vocal or would not care as much about four-year extended terms if we had a council that knew how to use committees correctly and didn't invoke the emergency clause every time they want to get something done. But the non-government is slow, so, free readings gives everyone an appropriate amount of time to show up, show out, the second reading hashes out all of those issues, we don't have to do it on Facebook, and then by the third reading, we're not as mad as we were when we got here. On its face, it's insulting to call everything an emergency just to slide something by and keep public opinion and input now. So, I'm asking you guys to help me, while we have a separate parks budget from a separate complex budget, when our tax money funnels through the same circuit, when we voted to put our tax dollars towards parks, we didn't separate it this way, but now it's separate. If you chair finance committee, if you chair a parks committee, and the mayor asks for parks, or asks for committee reports, give a committee report. I love hearing about Louisiana barbecue, and I love hearing about what the education was, but I would much rather hear about how our parks committee meet during council, because that's what council first chooses meetings for. I don't know when, I don't know if our finance committee meets regularly, monthly, but it would help me understand why we have so many different budgets, and I could advocate better for our parks and the money that's streaming through there if I understood, because I was involved in those things, and they happen. So, that's all I have, and I love you, talk with you later if you want to, just not in time.
Are we entertaining a motion to adjourn?
The gentleman back there had a question, pretty sure long ago, how the ATVs.
Oh, about the ATVs? Oh, I can talk about that any day of the week.
He wasn't on the list, but we're gonna let him speak, I know we've got something to talk about, and we want to hear what he's got to say, now, keep in mind you're gonna agree that time.
I got you. Hey, I don't see a problem with the golf carts, and I don't see a problem with ATVs, the other towns around Arkansas that allows it. I did take Jake Paul and, uh, Mr. Redmond, hey, ordinance that BlackRock just passed, and I did give some to the city council, dropped along for their mailbox, and I don't see a problem, we just have ATVs on the back of these streets. As long as you, like, hey, I agree, pay your permit if you want, I have full quarters. I don't see a problem with it. I wish y'all would come up with some kind of ordinance that they, you know, it approved for us to write. I know you listen, bring up the state law, and I know you, I know you almost kiss some kids on the side of the highway, they talked about this. But what if I was on a tricycle, would you call one, or, or them from selling tricycles?
Tricycles aren't illegal.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm saying. ATVs, they're safe, they got seat belts, they got road cages, they got headlights, they got taillights. They're safer than a golf cart in my book. So, that's all I gotta say, I wish one of y'all come up with an ordinance, so we could try.
I'm gonna answer this.
Go ahead.
Because I've already answered Stephen before.
Yeah, we had about an hour, make it, go ahead.
I've already talked to, I talked to the representatives, actually broke this, the state law. We cannot legally pass an ordinance.
That's my problem.
It's illegal ordinance.
There's no way, they got a city.
It's an illegal ordinance. I'm not gonna argue with Stephen, because I'm telling you, the law is the law, that's the state law.
So, you trying to say the city council, some of them can't write an ordinance and try to?
They cannot.
So, you telling them that they cannot do that?
That's exactly what I'm saying, the state law says they can't.
Don't have a fight.
They didn't, but it's an illegal ordinance, that's what I'm trying to say.
No way.
Yes, it is a way, there's illegal ordinance, it's all wrong.
And y'all didn't have a problem with ATV, I'm not picking on each other, no.
I'm not, it don't matter, we're not gonna argue that.
No, I'm not gonna argue, I'm saying, man, we didn't have a problem with it, even Mr. Redmond here didn't have problem, just, no, I'm talking, I'm sorry. But, you know, we never got pulled over or nothing until after your incident with the kids. And all of a sudden, I heard, uh, one of his officers say that, that a text message sent out after this happened. You know, I don't understand why it happened after your incident with the kids. Y'all had no problem until that time. And now everything just blows up, and everybody's throwing a fit over it.
They're throwing a fit over a law, that's a state law, that we are.
Didn't have a problem with it, no, no, before that?
Because it wasn't enforced, it is, it's gonna be enforced, that's it.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Okay. For years, these kids have been allowed to ride four-wheeler and side-by-side. Now, they're gonna be banned, but you're going to reward people on golf carts, so, in my opinion, I think golf carts are gonna be banned too. I get it, it's a law, but a golf cart is just as dangerous as a four-wheeler and a That's just my opinion.
The state law says.
I get it.
And that's what, that's what we need to get.
I, I get it, law, but.
What we need to get, that's the law.
I get it, the law.
We're gonna enforce the law, and we're not gonna make illegal laws.
I, I'm not saying make illegal law, I'm just saying, let's make ordinance to ban golf carts.
If a council member wants to make an ordinance to ban golf carts, if it's a legal ordinance in the league, and our city attorney approves that ordinance, we'll bring it up and let the city council vote on it. I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm not gonna get.
I'm not either.
One way or the other.
But I'm just saying, now you're punishing kids, because now you're gonna enforce the law. I get it, but it's been like, go for years and years.
But when I came in the office, one of the first things I said was, is we're gonna follow the laws of oysters and codes that go for everybody. And I, I even told Mr. Redmond.
I get that, but if we're gonna do the law, and everything, just do the law every time, not just pick it.
And I told Chief Redmond, if we didn't start taking care of the side-by-side when I first come in the office, and they wrote a few warnings, and nothing was done other than that, and I almost hit two low, fully loaded side-by-side kids, that scared me to death, I'm not gonna lie to you. That's when I called, and said, you gotta put stop just for somebody gets killed. And we've had, I don't know how many, what the number, seventy-four complaints on side-by-sides or on ATVs and UTVs, and we've had, I think, six acts. And we've had, I think, six accidents where at least one or two were airlifted to the hospital and were seriously injured.
Well, I mean, I get it, but now you've got these dirt bikes that drive these streets that, I mean, gonna wipe out somebody because they're not doing speed limit.
And I agree with you. That's, that's breaking the speed limit. And if we have an officer there to ride a ticket for that, that's what needs to be done. And how about big motorized bicycles? They're just as fast as a teenager.
Whether they're just the fastest for miles or less.
Ages that are driving, that are riding the side by sides and ATVs are the younger generation. They're the younger teenagers and the younger twenties. The most, the majority are the ones in this city that are on the golf carts are your older citizens like me that my golf cart will only go about thirty miles an hour. That is, if that. Those ATVs and four wheelers and the side by sides, they go a lot faster and the ones that are riding on those things are a lot longer than I am. About seventy-five year old.
Let's, let's stop, let's stop, let's stop the arguments. The point is plain and simple. It's illegal and if the council comes up with a ordinance that is legal for us to pass limiting or stopping golf carts, then so be it. I'm not gonna pass it or don't. If they wanna present it, that's fine. I already presented an ordinance for golf carts trying to make it as safe as possible for our citizens and it was died on the floor. I'm not mad about that. That's fine. I'm just doing what I feel is a potential for citizens in Arkansas. And it's the same way, I am not gonna introduce an ordinance that is illegal and I'm not gonna, uh, enforce an illegal ordinance if it even was there. So, there's, there's nothing else to discuss on that matter now until, if you wanna talk to your council members and discuss it with them, that's great. I'm not mad about, I'm not mad at anybody about all this. I'm just doing what I. But I'm just saying, how's it like, you said that's had Black Rock's illegal? I know they got the city attorney, they had to find some loophole somewhere. That don't mean that that is. I've already talked to the municipal league and I've already talked to the, I talked to the one that actually broke the law, the state representative of Black Rock.
Are you a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
We've got a motion on, over to you then. Have a second.
Take it.
Mayor made a motion to adjourn. If the fans make a second, all the favor say aye.